The Bolton 2014 Annual Town Meeting is reconvened. We started our meeting last night, May 5th, 2014. Tonight is May 6th, 2014. We have, the meeting has been opened and we've gone through all the opening procedures. So we're going to pick up right where we left off last night. We got through the first eight articles in the warrant last night. So we're going to pick up with Article Number 9, which is Amendment to the Code of the Town of Bolton, et cetera, Mixed Use Village Overlay District Bylaw. What's your pleasure on Article 9?
Move the article, Mr. Moderator. Second it.
Article's been moved and seconded. We have a report from the Planning Board, who's the sponsor of this. And by the way, I forgot to say, it's sponsored by the Planning Board and the Village Overlay Working Group, approved by the Selectmen and the Advisory Committee. So we have a report from the Planning Board and then we have a presentation on this for the meeting.
I have a duly notice Planning Board hearing.
Jonathan, would you introduce yourself, please? And you need to lean into that microphone.
Jonathan Keefe, I'm the Chairman of the Planning Board. At a duly notice Planning Board hearing held on March 26th, 2014, the Planning Board voted unanimously to support and recommend approval of the zoning bylaw, mixed use village overlay district in Article 9 of the warrant. At this hearing, the Planning Board nominated Kent Trup from the Village Overlay Working Group to give a presentation of this article.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me okay?
Uh, Ken, you need to really get up on that microphone, Ken.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. As Jonathan said, I'm Kent Trup from Meadow Road. I was on the Overlay Working Group and I'm going to tell you a little about the process of that. If we could have the first slide, please.
Louder, please.
You really need to stay right on that mic.
The article failed in 2012. It got 60 percent majority but requires, as the article tonight, a two-thirds vote because it's zoning article. I voted against it at that time. It only failed by 21 votes. I voted, but then the Planning Board during the summer held a post-mortem meeting to find out what was wrong, how it could be fixed, how things could be made better going forward to maybe get that additional 6 percent that was necessary. I attended that meeting. They formed, asked the Selectmen to put together an Overlay Working Group to look at the bylaw. I volunteered to be on it and there were some other people, including some other opponents, as well as new faces, who joined that. And so I'm going to talk a little about what the committee did, what we ended up with, and why you should support this. Next slide, please. This is a list of the members. It was a good cross-section of the community, I think. And as I mentioned, there were opponents as well as proponents and representatives from the Planning Board and the Selectmen and the Advisory Committee who participated in the group. The next slide, please. So what we did is to start with the original bylaw and to review it. And one of the important things that I don't think had been done the first time around is that we got assistance from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. They did several different things, including provide the group with examples of overlay districts in other towns, even some visits that people made. And they also assisted us with graphics, including some of the diagrams that you'll see later on. Through them, they identified several independent people who had nothing to do with Bolton developers and the committee brought in and interviewed a couple of developers about what they liked or didn't like, or thought made sense or didn't make sense as far as an overlay district was concerned. The group then modified the bylaw as it thought was necessary. And in the end, after approximately a year of work and a series of interviews with four of the landowners, came up with the bylaw that's being presented tonight. And it has a unanimous approval from the Working Group. Next slide, please. This slide shows you the major changes from what existed in 2012. One of the reasons that the group concluded there was a failure in 2012 was because housing had been optional in that. And the group felt fairly strongly that, and had interpreted some of the votes at the town meeting, that there really needed to be a housing component as part of the district. And so there was a lot of discussion of this. And it was discussed with each of the landowners that came in. And perhaps somewhat surprisingly, they found the housing requirement to not be a problem for them at all as far as pursuing the development. An important point on the housing is that first line. We're not talking about the typical type of subdivision housing that we have in town. We're talking about top-of-the-shop sort of housing, one- to-two bedrooms, smaller sort of apartments or small housing that would be appropriate in this kind of village environment. Now, the other thing that was different from 2012 are some slight changes and reductions in the actual lots that are covered by the overlay. And we'll show those in a minute or two. But basically, it's fewer parcels than were before and clustered around 495 and they're listed there. And we'll talk a little more about those in the next couple of slides. The next one is just a kind of a review of the purpose. So if I could have the next slide. I wanted to emphasize here that it's the promotion of the village character and most especially, it provides flexibility to the developer. But with the inclusion of the housing and with the more village-like development, we think that it would make for better development. So yes, it's more flexible for the developer, but we think that it would make for better development for the town. And the parcels were chosen to apply and test and see how it works out. And then, if it has worked well there, if it makes sense, if it doesn't need to be changed, then the overlay could always be expanded to other business parcels. And if it needed to be adjusted, as some of the other bylaws that we've seen recently need to, then that could be considered later as well. So those are really the purposes. The next slide shows the parcels that it applies to. I don't have a pointer, but if you look at the lower left, where it's called Bolton Office Park, we old timers think of that as the Flatley parcel. So that's where the former Flatley building and the now Bolton Office Park building is located with all of the parking and land that's around that. The one that says Bolton Corners is where the current Clinton Savings and Dentists are and the land that is wrapped around that is of separate ownership, but that's in the same development and is considered part of it as well. The yellow area on the other side of 495 is the Cane property as well as in the right-hand side of that yellow parcel, the Country Covered property. Now, one of the things that is explicitly not in that parcel is the one that's over on the far right that up there says 4D71. That's residentially zoned property that's in the intersection of 117 and 85. And the group decided that we did not want to include that in it because that is an important intersection area and we just didn't want that to become part of the development at this time. So those are the parcels to which it applies. And as I say, we met with most of the landowners of those who did not meet with Country Covered, but the rest of them we met with. And I might mention that at the very bottom of the yellow property on the right, which is the Cane property, there is some acreage of residential there. So they would be able to use that land for the mixed use overlay, meeting that housing requirement. Could I have the next slide, please? This shows you very briefly some differences between the current zoning and what the overlay would provide. The important thing to remember is that it's an alternative. Developer doesn't have to use it, the town can't force them to use it. But if they do, then the items on the right-hand side are the things that apply. So they have the possibility of additional buildings, a reduced setback, and the housing mandatory. The more flexible parking is a combination of the number of spaces and where they can be located. On the current zoning, there are specific requirements for the amount of business-owned parking, but that's adjustable based on the development. The next slide is a concept, run it in these, in this slide and in the next one. Wanted to show you what, in a concept drawn for us by MAPC, could look like. So this is under current zoning, what would be possible if someone took one of the current vacant lots and subdivided it, assuming that they were legally allowed to do that, and put a big box store on each one of those with parking in the front. And because of the 150-foot setback and the other requirements in the bylaws, it would basically look like that with the only ability to have one building on a lot. So you split the lot down the middle and be able to put two of those on there. If you go to the next slide, this is what would be possible with a village overlay. So you can have smaller buildings, you can have more than one building. The parking can be behind the buildings, it can be scattered around the buildings. And you can notice there in the back, there's some housing. Now, it doesn't have to be in the back there, but it's at least possible to do it and it's a requirement to use the overlay. And the feeling of the overlay group is that this sort of concept is better than the sort of concept under the current zoning. And just a further note, that that housing is one- to-two bedrooms, as I mentioned before. And you might have in, say, that yellow building, perhaps the second floor on that would be the shops over, the coffee shop that a person had there or whatever it was. That flexibility is there. Could I have the next slide, please? Now, one of the things that was talked about early on in the process of our committee and also even at the recent hearing, was that this put too much power in the hands of the Planning Board. The Working Group believes that that's not the case. And what I'm trying to show here is that the control that the town has is essentially the same as it would be with current zoning. So this is not like a 40B. It's not something where, because they're doing it this way, they get to have a comprehensive permit that gets them through a lot of the permits. So the special permit process that the Planning Board has is the same and that's very public and people make input to that. There's a design review board that's required to provide its input on the architecture. The Conservation Commission, to the extent there are wetlands and rivers in the area, still have their entire separate process. The site plan review has to be jointly signed by the Selectmen and the Planning Board, so you have another board in there. And Title V and any other things having to do with water and sewer are under the aegis of the Board of Health. None of those is waived, and so all of those boards remain in place. The other thing that we insisted on being included in the bylaw is a traffic study. And so the developer would be required to pay, if the town wanted to, for a traffic study to actually look at what the impact of the development would have. That may or may not be in the current bylaws, depending how you interpret it, but it's explicit in this one. So that's, so basically, we believe that the oversight is there and that no greater power is being given to the Planning Board and no power is being taken away from any other board. So my last slide, please, to summarize. We picked the parcels we did because we thought that it would provide better development for the town. And with any of those, the town government still has the authority that it has to review. We picked the parcels to test it there and it can always be expanded later on by adding parcels or making changes to the restrictions. So that's the end of the presentation and I would urge a yes vote on the article.
Thank you, Mr. Trup. Do we have discussion on this motion for the overlay district? Yes, sir.
Hi, Eric Nealon. I'm a member of the Planning Board and the EDC. First of all, I just want to say that I'm for this because it'll keep the rural characteristic of the town. What it will do is it'll add some small businesses and it'll add some revenue to town. I mean, it won't be a lot because of the type of businesses we want, they're small. So that will help with the taxes somewhat. But also, what it will do is it will add some amenities to town that will help with the desirability for potential home buyers. So I mean, if home values go up a little bit, the tax rate would go down in doing so. Also, with the one- to-two-bedroom townhouse condo housing that's mandatory, the type of people that would buy those are either young couples, first house, or older people who kids have moved out. So, you know, that will be more revenue. You know, there'll be less kids going to school and it'll add more revenue to town. Also, on top of that, the percentage of the, the percentage of the education in the budget would potentially go down by adding this revenue that will have less burden on the education budget. So that's it. I urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nealon. Yes, ma'am. You can tilt that down, yeah.
Nan Schnitzler, Meadow Road. The presenter mentioned 40Bs and I was wondering if the overlay district precluded any of those landowners from doing a 40B on their land?
Someone care to respond to that? Council, Town Council? Thank you. Go ahead.
The overlay district doesn't provide for inclusionary zoning, which would be affordable housing. Someone could do 40B anyway, if they wanted to. On the, on the, whatever the land is zoned as it is now, you can do a 40B because 40B pretty much sets aside all zoning. But this doesn't have to address 40B and it doesn't. And it doesn't require affordable housing as a component. These are market rate units.
Thank you, Ms. Ducey. Yes, sir.
Al Ferry, Pinewood Road. I have a couple of specific questions, one or two of which could lead to an amendment, I would suggest. But in any case, I think this is for planning, questions for Planning Board, Jim, Mr. Jim. One is, what's wrong with research laboratories? If I look at the sections E and F, it looks like you could have a software development operation going on. You have a software development laboratory as long as you promise not to do any research. Same seems to be true of medical and dental. I don't quite understand the definitions here that are being used, perhaps between sections E and F.
Is that your only question, Mr. Ferry?
No. Nobody do more, more of them?
Well, you have...
I thought I'd do one at a time, but we could do them together.
You have two minutes left, if you'd like.
Okay. Another one is...
Get in, speak into the mic, yeah.
Okay. Most of these artist renderings you see of things like this, projects like this, have what amounts to green strips between the project and the road. But I don't think that's particularly specified here. Especially if you're going to reduce setback, why not specifically require a green strip? It makes a big difference in the appearance of these things in town. Those are two for the moment.
Okay, thank you.
I want someone to answer those questions first.
Unless you want to go first and we can follow with them. All right, Planning Board? Can you respond to those two questions?
Yeah, I'll start with Mr. Ferry's second question first. The special permit process and the design review board looks at green buffers for these types of developments. So that would be part of the, you know, that whole process. There's a lot of language in the overlay. If you look specifically at the overlay article and as well as the tasks for the design review board, there's a lot of language in there about mobility, about green buffers, privacy for neighbors, controlling light and noise pollution. So I ask you to, you consult that. The first question about, what was it, research?
Research facilities.
Research facilities, that's part of our existing zoning. And I think it really has to do with laboratories that have certain chemicals going out into leach fields. So Bolton is not, you know, Bolton, everybody has their own well and their own water, their own sewage treatment. So you wouldn't want a research facility dumping things down the drain that could get into our aquifer and affect all of our drinking water.
Thank you, Mr. Keefe. Yes, ma'am.
Sharon Chappella from Warner Road. I have to say, I'm really excited about this. It looks as if it would be an attractive addition to the town. I can imagine, having seen developments like this that are really attractive with lots of amenities, lots of different shops, it would be a nice place to be able to stop on the way home or meet friends for coffee. And I think it's a better plan than it was the first time it was offered. I like the fact that actually it does call for at least one affordable housing unit, I believe, for every eight. There is, there isn't a, an affordable housing requirement within that. So I think that that's also good. And also, having housing above or associated with sales or stores is a very, very inventive and forward-looking thinking about how we have less of an impact on the environment by layering our utilities, our living and our buying purchases all in one on top of the other instead of spreading them out over the land. So I think that it's an effective use of land. I think it is much more attractive. I can't imagine a giant grocery store and a CVS and some of the other things that were proposed at an earlier time. And I dearly love whoever it is that said that we can't have dance halls. What in heaven's name is a dance hall in this day and age? And I want to know who the geezer was who got it inserted.
Well, we don't need to get into that. Yes, sir.
Rob Colclaser, Century Mill Road. I'm curious, you had the two nice graphics, one with the big box and the large parking lot and the second one with the nice little shops and the houses in the back. Is there anything in the zoning that prohibits putting those two things together where we end up with a large, big box store with houses behind? You know, I can conceive of, in some ways, the worst of both, or the worst of one mixed with the other. And the other thing is, is there some kind of limits on the size of the buildings that can be put down? So we're talking pharmacies, retail. Could we end up with a large grocery store with something behind it? So I'm just curious if there's constraints inside this bylaw.
Okay, thank you. Planning Board, or somebody want to respond to that?
I think the mandatory requirement to have...
The microphone?
I think the mandatory requirement to have residential as a balanced part of the development, controls what type of commercial activity you can do on the site. I don't think you, I can't, I'm not aware of any sites that have big box stores with apartments above them or behind them or near them. So it's hard to imagine a developer kind of combining those two things together and having a development where people want to both shop and live.
Thank you, Mr. Keefe. Yes, sir.
Robert Cohen, Harvard Road. First of all, there is a development now in North Borough that has housing with big box stores right next to it. So that may or may not be a deterrent. My question really is on the congestion in that area. It's the most congested part of the town during afternoon rush hour and obviously, we're going to add a lot more traffic. And Ken mentioned we can do a traffic study. My question, I'd like some clarification. When they do a traffic study, are there any limitations that come out of that traffic study? Are they just do a traffic study and say, okay, now we can proceed?
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Mr. Trup, you want to respond?
It's more that the traffic study provides information and ideas for mitigating. I don't think there is something where the traffic study would say, oh, it shouldn't be more than a certain number of square feet. So there's no prohibition of that. There's certainly a possibility of having additional traffic from this development, but there'll be more traffic from the conventional development. So it's really, I don't think the group believes that the traffic would be any worse with a village than it would otherwise. But I think it's also true that there's nothing that specifically prohibits the big box store. It's a matter of persuasion and a matter of preference on the part of the developer and, as Jonathan was saying, the likelihood of their doing it. There's nothing that actually prevents it, nor would the traffic study prevent traffic.
Thank you, Mr. Trup. Yes, ma'am.
Karen Regan, Bolton Woods Way. The one concern I have is, has anyone done a study on demand? If you go into Stowe, you go to the Shaws there, it's never really packed, like you go to other stores. In Hudson, the main street of many of the stores, for anyone who's grown up in this area has known, a lot of the stores there have gone out of business. So I'm just curious, has anyone has ever done a survey or any kind of intelligence on how many people that we have that would actually use this facility? Because the fear is, we have the salt box that's been dilapidated for years. The mobile station had gone out of business years ago. It's been, you know, people have been trying to do a lot of stuff with it, but it's never taken. Who's to say that we do this development and then down the road, it's just another ghost town?
Thank you. You want to respond to that, Mr. Nealon?
Yeah, I'll respond to the last couple. Eric Nealon, Bear Hill Road. First of all, on Mr. Cohen's concern about the big box stores with housing behind or anything. If you look at in the warrant G and H, there's a pretty extensive design review board, which would also lead to a special permit process between the Planning Board and the Selectmen and the Conservation Committee. So it's not like a developer can come in and sneak something through. The design review board and the Planning Board and all these boards want what we saw there. We don't want a big box, box store, you know. So it's, somebody can't just come in and do what they want. There's an extensive review process. And the elected, the elected official, the elected members of the Planning Board and the design review board will look at all this and guide the developers to what we want. I didn't catch the woman's name. But on the concern about small businesses and, you know, will they be able to thrive or not? Life in small businesses is tough. So I mean, there's, there's no guarantee whether, you know, what small business will make it. I mean, I think in general, the way I feel about this is it's kind of like Bolton local. You know, we have the village atmosphere with the housing behind it and as a local community, we need to support local businesses, small businesses, whether it's a coffee shop or whatever. So I mean, with the special permit process and the design review board and the village atmosphere that we're trying to create and, you know, nobody in town really wants, you know, nobody wants a big box store, they want small businesses. So, you know, small business life is hard and, you know, as a town, we'll have to, you know, support it and patronage... know, support it and, and patronage, you know, the small businesses and, you know, try to, you know, as a member of the EDC, I try to, you know, try to help market small businesses in town, like, you know, you know, like Fotini's just moved in. So we tried to write an article to let everybody know that, hey, you know, there's this small restaurant in town, support them. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Nyle. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Michelle Tuck, Old Sugar Road. I'd like to summarize, it might be kind of what you just said to Karen Regan. The, this overlay is, oh, let me, let me backtrack. Development's going to happen on these lots with either this overlay or with the existing zoning. There's nothing to stop that. If the people who own these lots or a, a new buyer want to develop, they will develop. The overlay is, gives those potential developers a different route, potentially a, a design that's more in character with our town. Whether you vote for the overlay or not, or whether there is an overlay or not, there still may be development there. Doesn't mean that we need that use or that we want that use because that these properties are owned privately. So we're giving them a secondary path and a path that, that many of us prefer. There's a bit of a carrot, which is the additional lot coverage, but the stick are all the other things, the, the additional green space, pitched roofs, smaller buildings, courtyards, parking behind the front of the building, all of these issues that they've already talked about. So if you think about it this, that way, it's not, do we need this store or not? Because that is not under our control. But we're trying to give them a different path to potentially do something better than what they can do now. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Tuck. We've had some good comments here. I think we're about ready to vote. Mr. Cohen, you want to say one more thing?
Yes. One quick question for the, for the planning board. Is there any height limitation on the properties? And if so, what is it?
Can someone respond to that? Mr. Keat?
Yeah, the height, the height limit...
Lean into that mic.
The height limit is the same in the overlay as it is under current zoning. I think that's 35 feet.
Thank you, Mr. Keat. As soon as I said we're going to vote, we got a bunch of people standing up. Okay. Mr. Ferry.
I want to go back to, to the point I made before. I agree with Jonathan, it's exactly, his point is fine about the wells. Michelle, of course, is right that we should vote for this. Nevertheless, what Jonathan's, what Jonathan's view of what should happen and the reason for this is not at all what it says here. And if we're going to actually write this as a controlling document and it's legal one, we have to mean what we say. But there's nothing in, there's nothing in either of these paragraphs that would, that specifically prevents the kind of pollution Jonathan was talking about and instead could just prevent something like the way RLE started up or something. I don't think the wording there really is right. And I think it should be changed to say what they mean. And I would rather that the Jonathan amended than that I amended because he really knows what he wants to say.
Thank you, Mr. Ferry. I don't know who was next. Go ahead.
My name's Holene Demmer. I'm the chairman of the Economic Development Committee. I'd like to address the woman from Bolton Woods Way. I didn't even catch her name.
Karen Berry.
Okay.
We don't, we actually don't do names, but that's, that's okay.
Okay. In particular about the demand, I applaud the current owner of the salt box for coming in and renovating or in the process. I don't know about you, but it provides a lot of excitement. I'm not sure that the, as she said, the dilapidated salt box became dilapidated because of lack of demand. And also the Smith property, I really applaud the Bolton Conservation Trust and their efforts to really make that a beautiful property. And I'm not sure that became a dilapidated property because of demand. I think there is demand. So I hope you will consider that. I applaud the planning board and all the effort of the groups coming together. It was very sad when it got defeated in 2012. And I really applaud the people that really tried to do a postmortem and figure out what the town really wanted. So I hope you vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Demmer. Now, do we, do we have anything new to add to the discussion that we've already had?
I hope so.
Okay, then.
David Wiley, Green Road. In the picture that Ken Trup showed of what this might look like, the main building was, seemed like a wall. Didn't look like any village I ever saw. And it must have had quite a few square footages in it. And if you turned it into a, into a square or a box rather than a piece of strip or elongated mall or whatever that was, you'd have a big box, possibly at least. I would like to see some more prohibitions in here. And I would like to know whether there are any prohibitions on lighting after certain hours or lighting of certain intensity or lighting facing residential or the street. I'd like to know something about restrictions on limitations in signs. There's a great reliance that they're placing on the planning board and the other, other boards that would be involved in the permitting. However, we can't always be sure that the people on the boards five years, 10 years, 20 years from now are going to be as, as conscious of the tastes of the town that prevail today as the, as the ones who are there now. They may be a completely different sort of attitude toward these things and very permissive about things that we might wish we hadn't permitted. I would like to hear about lighting and signs in particular.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle. Planning Board, can you respond to the question about lighting and signs? Mr. Keat?
There is language in the document as well as in the special permit process. The working group, you know, studied it in great detail. Maybe, maybe Michelle Tuck would come back up and kind of talk about the design review board process. But there's a lot of language about light pollution, noise pollution, vegetated buffers, public amenities within the development, pedestrian pathways through the development. So it's, it's pretty comprehensive. It's, it's, it's hard, hard to, you know, focus and read it all, but it's in there.
Thank you, Mr. Keat. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Moderator, Martha Remington. I believe I'm the only direct abutter to one of these acreages that is subject to a possible village overlay. 23 acres of prime land at the intersection of 495 and 117 are directly across from my antique home. I want to vote for the village overlay bylaw. I am a bit worried that it will mean things like the ledge at the end of the north bond ramps will be blasted away, that other concerns where they can't get regular well or septic will mean surge treatment and the entire area from Route 85 to 495 is leveled. I'm hoping that through the special permit process, the planning board and the Board of Health and other boards who review these will take these things into consideration for something that we really need in town so that it won't be detrimental to the neighborhoods that have older homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Remington. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Tuck, Chairman of the Design Review Board. We, we do have language for signage, lighting, landscaping, parking, dumpster, dumpsters being behind the building or screened fences or stone walls, tree scapes. You, you name it, we've got it in the design review board guidelines.
Thank you, Ms. Tuck.
Can I suggest that we vote?
Unfortunately, I can't take a move the question motion after someone has made a, a statement. Someone can come to the microphone and just say, I moved the question, and that would move us toward a vote. Are you waiting to speak?
Janet Pesatoro, Wilder Road. I just have a question. Is it possible to specifically prohibit big, big box stores? Is that legal? Is there a way to do it?
Not sure if that's been answered yet. Anybody want to say something to that?
No.
No, they don't. Okay. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Pat Westwater-Jong, 3 Autumn Lane. I don't know if this is, I'd just like to go on record saying that this is a big bicycle area and that Harvard does a big business. There are lots of groups that have bicycle trips out here and that if we were able to get some bicycle paths down in our, in our town center, I know we've had people on accidents before, we might be able to do something really creative on the weekend that would entice all the cyclists that come out here with all those different groups and perhaps make this a gathering place where people could come that would be recreational. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Westwater-Jong. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Mark Chunta, Fox Run Road. Can we move the question?
Are you making a motion to move the question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Move the question. For those of you not familiar, the motion to move the question, it sounds like nothing really, but it's, what it means is a motion to end debate and go straight to a vote. We need a two-thirds majority to do that. All those in favor of ending discussion and going straight to a vote, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. We're going to vote. This needs a, because it's zoning, it needs a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion under Article 9 regarding the mixed-use village overlay district bylaw, all those in favor of it, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Oh, it's unanimous. The next article, Article 10, adoption of maps issued by FEMA. The planning board, I believe, wants to make a motion on this, plus they owe us a report.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator, do I make the motion for consent first or read the report first?
You should make your motion first so we can get that, get it in front of the meeting.
Okay. Articles 10, 11 and...
Would you introduce yourself?
Okay. I'm sorry. John Carlin, Planning Board, Sugar Road. Articles 10, 11, and 12 all deal with the periodic updates for the FEMA flood maps, which is something that the federal government kind of hands down. But they're all pretty much part and parcel of the same thing. So I would like to make a motion for consent, which basically means we consider all these articles as one rather than separate articles.
Second.
So the motion you're making is that we pass Articles...
10, 11, and 12.
Say that in the mic, please.
The motion is to pass Articles 10, 11, and 12 as a group.
By consent.
By consent.
Thank you. And that's, that's pre-seconded. Okay. I'll just, we still need a planning board report on these, but I'll explain to anybody not familiar, which may be many people here. A consent agenda is, as you were just saying, a method whereby the sponsor of the article considers them pretty routine, not likely to generate discussion. And so we would go, we'd block three, in this case, three articles together, vote all of them as a block, up or down. And what I would do is call out each article number. If anyone wants to talk about it, you have to yell out hold and we'll remove it from the consent agenda. So first of all, give us your report, reports.
The reports, just one altogether. At a duly noticed planning board hearing held on March 26, 2014, the planning board voted unanimously to support and recommend approval of Articles 10, 11, and 12 of the warrant. Article 10 is for the adoption of the maps issued by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Article 11 is for the zoning amendment to subsection A of the floodplain district bylaw. And Article 12 is for the zoning amendment to subsections B2 and C1A of the floodplain district bylaw.
Thank you. I'm going to call out the article number. If anyone wants it, wants to hold it, just call out hold and we'll remove it from the consent agenda. Article 10.
Can I ask a question?
Is this a point of order?
Point of order.
If it's a point of order, please stand, state your name, and tell me your point of order.
Leslie Brice, Penwood Road. This is to approve a map that's dated July 16th.
That, that's not a point of order. So if you want to hold one of the articles, you have to call out hold. Do you want to hold the article?
Yes, hold.
Article 10, you want to hold?
Please.
Article 11? Article 12? All right. We're going to pull Article 10 out of the consent agenda. We're going to go ahead and vote 11 and 12 and we'll come back to 10 because we had a hold on that. All those in favor of passing Articles 11 and 12, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. They needed two-thirds and we got a unanimous, so that's good. Okay. We're going back then to Article 10. Adoption of maps issued by FEMA, sponsored by the planning board, approved by selectmen and advisory. What's your pleasure on Article 10?
Move the article, Mr. Moderator. Second.
Article's been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 10, the motion under Article 10.
Leslie Brice, Penwood Road. I just have a question regarding approving a map that's dated in the future. It's July 16th of this year. Has anyone seen this map?
Okay. Thank you. Planning Board, or somebody want to respond to that?
Hello, John Carlin, Planning Board. I had the very same question when this came up to me. I said, hey, wow, it's March and this map is dated July. It's kind of fun for the feds to do. The maps already do exist and I forget the exact reasoning behind it, but basically everything's set in stone from the feds level, but it's dated ahead of time and that's when they'll actually take effect with regard to insurance coverage and things of that nature.
Any other discussion under Article 10? Ms. Ferry.
Ferry, Penwood Road. Now, I hadn't paid much attention to this, but now that this date and so on is mentioned, I now also recall that, I think there's congressional action on these, at least proposed congressional action on these FEMA maps. And I begin, and I begin to recall wondering whether FEMA really has its act together. I know that some people in town and some people around think that these FEMA maps were created too hastily and are creating hardship for some citizens. And just because FEMA right now thinks they've updated their maps, I'm not sure that we should go ahead and adopt them without letting any controversy about them settle down. Now, I haven't looked into this at all, but maybe if the planning board has really done diligence on this, they can explain it.
Thank you, Mr. Ferry. Yes, sir.
John Carlin, Planning Board. I haven't been following it very, very closely. I do recall a bit of what Mr. Ferry was talking about. I believe that's primarily for coastal areas. Basically, the folks on the coast have been, being very heavily subsidized with the flood insurance. You see it every hurricane season, the poor folks on Palm Island getting whacked. The congressional action is towards those sort of folks when the insurance rates went up by quite a bit. With regard to whether or not we adopt it, if we choose not to adopt it as a town, then anyone in town that is looking to get FEMA flood insurance will not be eligible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Other comments? Okay, let's vote on this one. It needs a two-thirds majority. All in favor of the motion under Article 10 regarding the FEMA maps, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We've already covered Articles 11 and 12. We'll go to Article 13. Amendment to the code of Bolton, the town of Bolton, et cetera, et cetera. Mariborona Treatment Centers bylaw. Treatment Centers bylaw. This is sponsored by the Planning Board, approved by the Selectmen and the Advisory Committee. What's your pleasure on Article 13?
Move the article. Mr. Moderator. Second.
Article's been moved and seconded. We have a Planning Board report and a brief present—excuse me, a brief presentation on this from the Planning Board. Ms. Keith?
At a duly-noticed Planning Board hearing held on March 26, 2014, the Planning Board voted unanimously to support and recommend approval of the zoning bylaw, medical marijuana treatment centers, and Article 13 of the warrant. At a special town meeting last fall, the town voted to approve a temporary moratorium on permitting medical marijuana treatment centers while the Planning Board worked on a local bylaw. Since then, the Planning Board has worked over the course of many meetings to draft this article with the involvement of interested Bolton citizens. Article 13 proposes to give Bolton more control over the process for permitting registered marijuana dispensaries and the locations where they can be sighted. Registered marijuana dispensaries, or RMDs, is a Massachusetts state term, which includes both grow and retail facilities. The following is a list of these controls. An explicit requirement that applications for an RMD must go through Bolton's special permit and site review process, which gives the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen wide purview in evaluating proposals. Registered marijuana dispensaries are not allowed and in allowed use under Bolton's Right-to-Farm bylaw. Potential RMD sites are limited to business, limited business, and industrial zones. RMDs would not be allowed in residential and limited recreational business districts. Massachusetts has mandated a minimum 500-foot setback to places where children congregate, which has been increased to 1,500 feet in this article. Also included is a 500-foot setback to any residence. The GIS map on the screen shows the two setbacks combined and where a potential RMD could be located, including the Bolton Office Park, the Skinner property in the business district, and at Paragon Communications and Cobham Electronics in the industrial district. While there is probably—a—while there is a probable consensus that many of the potential sites shown on the GIS map are not ideal, it is important that we have a strong local bylaw with more than one potential RMD site that will be approved by the Attorney General's office. In addition, a clause has been added that in any one of the provisions of the bylaw—if any one of the provisions of the bylaw is found to be invalid by the Attorney General, all other provisions will remain in effect.
Thank you, Ms. Keith. Discussion? Yes, sir.
Hi, Tony Engel, 281 Main Street. We live in a development of nine houses located behind Skinner's—the little circle there—which is a limited-business-zoned area. I'd like to propose an amendment to the article. I have two copies. Do I give somebody a copy? I'd like to amend the article. Article 13, paragraph G, line 1, changing the words "500 feet" to "750 feet." Also in paragraph G, line 4, changing the words "500 foot" to "750 foot." You know, my thinking is that when we moved in there, it was a limited-business place. Everyone knows Skinner's was an auction house, very nice business to have in town, something that's comfortable to be located behind. We're in the woods. The houses in our development are all located about 500 feet apart, and when I read about these facilities—you know, I actually voted for the medical marijuana bylaw when we passed that. You know, people with compassion think that that's an appropriate thing to do, but the scope of it and the timing in terms of it being federally illegal and state-legal means that they can't do business using banks or credit cards. They manage an awful lot of cash, and the price hasn't come down on the product, so very expensive product, which make it target for theft and robbery. They're, to some extent, responsible for managing their own security, which might suggest that they hire armed guards. And when I think about my eight grandchildren playing on my driveway, I really don't want to think that 500 feet away through the woods, there's potentially a guy with an M-15 standing there protecting a bale of marijuana. So we already saw that we increased in town from 500—the state requirement—to 1,500 for places where children congregate, and it just seems to me that my grandchildren congregate on my driveway just as much as anyone congregates anywhere. So I'd like to see them protected to the degree that we can. I understand we need to allow more than one option, so I'm just asking that we be a little bit more creative on the math and perhaps value my grandchildren as half as valuable as children playing in a playground at school rather than a third as valuable. Thank you.
I second the motion.
Okay. Motion has—motion to amend has been made and seconded, changing—in paragraph G, where it says 500 feet, two different spots, changing it to 700 feet. It's been moved and seconded. Excuse me, 750 feet. Correct. It's been moved and seconded, so that's the motion now before the meeting.
Doug Storey, Spectacle Hill Road. I'm also a member of the Planning Board, and I was involved in writing this bylaw. I certainly respect what you said and understand it, and I just want to give you a little background about what we tried to do here and what the impact of this change will be. You know, we looked at the Town of Bolton, and we said the state law requires that we allow this somewhere within our town, and we thought long and hard about whether or not there was one particular location, a—maybe a place way off in the distance, away from—as far as possible from anything else that might be the best idea. We actually considered the idea of allowing it in residential in a very large parcel, like a farm, that might have a piece of land that would be very secluded, and at the end of the day, we decided not to do that. No other towns have allowed it in residential. The way the regulation is written, the only prohibition in terms of location is 500 feet—this is the state regulation—500 feet from where any children congregate, schools, playgrounds, things like that. We went much further than that by first changing that to 1,500 square—1,500 feet from places where children congregate, and then also added in the 500 feet to residents. There's nothing in the state resident regulations that has any setback to residences. We added that in. I don't know of any other town that's done it, and I hope it will pass, muster with the Attorney General. When you amend that to 750 feet, those first two circles are eliminated, and the south end of 117 at the industrial is eliminated. You've now decided there's only one location, and that's on the north end of 117. We can't, as a town, eliminate it everywhere, and if we make this too restrictive, we run the risk that our bylaw will not be approved by the Attorney General's office. If it is not, then the bylaw is not in force, and we run the risk of being subject to the state regulation, which is much less than what we've proposed here. So I would recommend that you vote against this amendment for that reason.
Thank you. Mr. Storey? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Karen Regan, Bolton Woods Way. So when I received the warrant and saw that this was an article that was actually being considered, I thought, "We've lost our minds." For us to actually consider this as a reason—for any reason—to bring this into our town is insane. I could sit here and give a million ideas of what we could do as a town, and if this is the best the Planning Board can come up with, of how we can, what, reduce taxes—I don't even know what the intent of this would be. Last night, we just approved a 40,000-plus expense for the police department for a new cruiser when we have zero crime in this town. You read the police blotter any week, and there's nothing going on. We're going to put a facility into this town that's going to attract crime. It's going to attract a lot of issues. It's not a farm. It's a facility, and the semantics of those words is directly related to the aesthetics of what we're going to have. I'm the chairperson of Parks and Rec in this town. I care a lot about the kids. I do a lot of work for the kids in this town. Doing something like this is counter to what this town is about and what we collectively believe in.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Delany?
I think the last speaker has—has sort of misapprehended this bylaw. This isn't intended—there's no current prospect of a marijuana facility coming to town. At the special town meeting—and there almost never was because our current bylaws were fairly restrictive. You'd need a special permit to do something. The two parties that had come here last year, once they learned that, they left town. But we had folks who were worried about this, so we had a moratorium in place. If we don't have a bylaw in place, we're at greater risk. So really, we're putting more restrictions with this bylaw in place than we currently have. As a practical matter, there wouldn't be any application for a marijuana facility in Bolton for years and years, if ever, and currently, there are two approved for Worcester County. It's a long approval process, and to get approval at the state level, you need the support of the municipality. It's unclear, under the special permit process that's been set up by the Planning Board, that any location would get it. So it's—the—so I think the fears are unfounded. This is—to put protections in place, not to invite these businesses in.
Thank you, Ms. Delany. And—excuse me, ma'am. Remember, the motion before the meeting is to—what we're talking about right now is to change the setback from 500 to 750 feet. That's specifically the motion before the meeting. Do you have a comment?
No.
Let you speak once more. Okay. Yes, sir.
By passing the bylaw as written, are we, in effect, saying that this business is approved in a limited-business-zoned area without a special permit, or is a special permit still required?
That also has—not directly to do with the bylaw—I mean, the amendment you proposed, but anybody want to respond to that? Mr. Storey?
Yes. No. The bylaw that we have proposed—and again, just to clarify—it is to create local rules for how we would evaluate an application that came before the town, and they are more restrictive and gives the town more control over deciding whether or not this would be appropriate for the town. The first thing is to require that it go through our special permitting process, which is very rigorous, and that gives the town a lot of leeway to have various reasons that we may think it may be inappropriate if that were the case. The second thing that we did is try to limit very, you know, extensively where this could occur. So that's why we ended up with only three locations that are all business-owned locations, but that meet the setbacks that we set.
Thank you, Mr. Storey. Mr. Dingen, did you want to speak?
I just wanted to say, this has been mentioned a few different ways, but we essentially, as a town, don't have a choice. We—it is illegal for us to prohibit marijuana facilities in our town. We just cannot have a permanent moratorium. We passed a temporary moratorium so that we could come up with guidelines that made more sense or more restrictive to our town, but that would hopefully pass muster with the Attorney General's office. With all respect to the amendment before us, to Mr. Storey's point, if we reduce the setback —or increase the setback, rather—we run the risk of all the good work that's been done and hopefully passes tonight not passing muster with the Attorney General's office, and then we're back to square one where it is allowed in more parcels with less restriction than what's before you tonight. So I urge you to vote against this amendment and vote for this bylaw this evening.
And now remember, the amendment's what's immediately before us. I understand it's all connected, so I'm allowing a fair amount of leeway here, but I'm sure—I think you were next, ma'am.
Robin Smith, Kettle Hole Road. I just have a question. So if we change it and then the Attorney General says it's a no-go, do we have another shot to make it what we want, or does it automatically take—the Massachusetts state law takes effect?
Anyone care to comment on that?
Yeah, if we reject it tonight, then the Massachusetts state law trumps whatever we—whatever—we don't have in place, and then we could come and do this again at next town meeting. Yeah. Massachusetts law is in place today, and what we're trying to do is put our own law on top of that. And so if we vote this down, then the law that's there right now by the Massachusetts legislature stays.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make a point. My, Mark St. Seer, 50 Bolton Woods Way. I had my—was talking to the Planning Board people this afternoon. My—corner of my house to—the setback from Progham to my house is 558 feet. So I would please urge you to change it to the 750 because I really don't want to go out to mow my lawn and have pot plants growing in necessarily—not my backyard, but literally almost in my backyard.
Thanks, sir. Who's next here? Yes, sir.
Dan Gaffney, 265 Main Street. Just a quick question as it relates to the setback, and, you know, we're pushing, you know, a potential change here that we don't even know if the state will support or not. So we've sort of made it okay at 500 feet. Why not make it okay at 750 feet? Let's go back to the state, see what they say, and then we can bring it back to town meeting if that isn't the way that it can be supported. We have additional time to bring these back into town meeting if 750 feet is not supported. So therefore, doesn't it make sense to basically push through the 750-foot and support that as opposed to the 500 feet? Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Storey, you want to respond?
I see your point, and you're right. It's conjecture as to what, at the end of the day, the Attorney General's office will approve, and we're already pushing it with the 500 feet to residents and the 1,500 feet versus the 500 that they have. So we don't know. You certainly could make the argument, "Why not? Just see if they would go for this." If it's struck down—and we can ask our town council this—if we do an amendment to 750 and that distance is struck down—you know, we did put the wording in the bylaw that if any part of this is determined to be unacceptable, the rest would remain in effect. I don't really know if that's how the Attorney General would look at it, you know, or would the entire bylaw be struck down and we'd have to come back with a new one, in which case we currently have a moratorium until now, until June. We do have an article in here that if this is in pass to extend the moratorium to the end of the year, that's it. We can't go till next June by what the state will allow. So that would require—if we wanted to get something in place before the moratorium ran out—that we would have a fall town meeting to do that, and we never know if we are going to have a fall town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Storey. Council, did you want to comment?
Yes, I had just conferred with my associate from Brackett and Lucas, who had done some research on this. The Attorney General's office has been approving bylaws with the 500-foot setback, although they've been warning the towns that have adopted that—that it is almost restrictive. You can't fashion a bylaw that's so restrictive, no one could have the use, and if that happens, it's subject to legal challenge, and someone could go to court and have it set aside and set it up anyway. So you have to make sure that your bylaw—you pass a bylaw, but by its operation, it stops them from doing it anyway. And if the AG's office is saying 500 feet is pushing it, 750 feet, I'm sure they'll warn on that, or they may just disapprove that part of it. But if you don't have a setback in there—if they disapprove that, then you have no setback, even if the rest of it stays in place, if they struck out that part. So they may approve it, and they may give a warning, and if you ever have a— So they may approve it and they may give a warning, and if you ever have a dispensary come to town, they may be able to challenge it and go in anyway.
Thank you, Ms. DuSette. Yes, ma'am, I think you're next.
Yes, hi. I'm Kathy Snow. I live in Bolton Woods Way. And I just really strongly want to urge people to vote for the...
You could tilt that down, the mic.
For the 750 setback. We have a lot of children, and it's a cul-de-sac kind of neighborhood, and the kids have to walk down the street to catch the bus, and I just don't think it would be an appropriate environment. So I think the 750 would be more than appropriate for this town. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe you were up already. Go ahead.
Lou Verati, Bolton Woods Way. I have a question. There's a restriction of footage where children congregate. There's a bus stop at the end of Bolton Woods Way. Would that be considered part of that restriction, meaning that...
Is that part of the amendment?
Is a bus stop where children get on and off the buses, is that where they congregate or not?
Yes.
Would you return the microphone?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I have been allowing a lot of leeway. What's before the meeting right now is the motion to change the 500 to 750, and I believe your question goes to that. There's been a lot of lea... I've been giving a lot of leeway in general, but let's remember, that's what's before us. Does anybody want to comment on the bus stop question, if that's a... Whatever the wording is, children congregating spot? Mr. Story?
So I wouldn't say that it would specifically be considered that a place where children congregate by the wording of the state regulation. Our special permitting process where the planning board would review any application could certainly bring that issue up, but I'd have to say I'd...
You're not sure.
I'm not sure, and, you know, you could say children congregate anywhere. So, I mean, that's...
No, no, no.
I hear what you're saying.
That's a bus stop. There's a big difference between a plane and a bus stop.
Sir, you've had your speak, okay?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Neil Darcy, Oak Trail. So I have a question, actually. So if we were to pass the amendment for 750 feet buffer, is there a way... Because we do have a moratorium that's also, if this subsequent article doesn't pass, is there a way that we can actually vote to have a moratorium until December, but also vote to have this 750 and then dated as of January 1st? So that if this does go to the Attorney General's office and it gets shot down, we do have time to make the changes and it doesn't come back? Because, as I understand it, even at 500 feet, there is a chance that that could get shot down, and we'll be back in the same boat again.
Counsel, do you want to comment about that, putting a January 1 effective date?
Well, the new... Assuming the Attorney General approves it, it's not... Doesn't go into effect until it comes back to the town and the town clerk... She's missing. ...publishes it. So this won't go into effect for probably a few months when the Attorney General gets around to approving it. Article 16 is to further extend the temporary moratorium, which should stay in place until you have an approved bylaw. I suppose there could be an amendment to change the December 31, 2014 date, which is in there, as I'm reading the article, to another date to cover until the time at which the Attorney General may approve or disapprove the bylaw.
Counsel, you're talking about the moratorium article?
Article 16 is in place. If this didn't pass, they were going to move to further extend the moratorium.
Correct.
So the moratorium that's currently in place expires on what date?
June 30.
June 30?
I believe the question is, is it possible to date the... To make the motion before... Well, the motion before us is the amendment, but the main motion before us, to make it effective January 1, if I heard correctly.
Oh, I'm sorry, to make the zoning. I thought he was talking about the moratorium, making it...
Or did I misinter...
No, no.
So what I was saying is, can we vote on the actual amendments to accept the parcels with the 750? If we're talking about extending this to 750, right, from 500 to 750?
That's the motion to amend before us.
That's the motion which we're discussing. Now, if that goes before the Attorney General's gets shot down, are we able to have a moratorium that we vote tonight? Put that in place so we do have that time, in other words, to get this worked out with the Attorney General so somebody can't slide in under? Okay, so if we vote tonight, approach the Attorney General, the Attorney General's office could pass this back, which means we'll be subjected to Massachusetts, whatever their standards are.
What they're more likely to do...
Mr. Darcy, I'm sorry. We really can't be speaking from our seats. Yes, Mr. Story, you had a response?
Yeah, I think that... I wanted to clarify the question. I think we do have a moratorium as Article 16, it would come up later on. We had intended to recommend to pass over it if these other articles passed, on the assumption that they would be approved. And perhaps he makes a good point, which is, if we were to pass it as well, the moratorium as well, even if we did pass these, with or without amendments, and pass the moratorium, would the moratorium be in effect to the end of the year, even if our bylaw was approved?
Yes.
Another question for counsel.
That's what I was... Had started to say, is that if you could somehow anticipate that the moratorium would end upon the approval by the Attorney General's office, if there was some wording to that effect and somehow keep it going until such time as it's approved, obviously, they may very well send it back with a warning. You do have the language in there that says, if anything is determined, if any provision of this bylaw is declared invalid, the other provisions remain in full force and effect. It's like a savings clause. So they may... That would save the bylaw, but it, based on my conversation, it's more likely that they will just warn you that it may not be in effect, rather than striking down the whole thing. What the Attorney General... My understanding is that what they're more concerned about is when you're really prohibiting them completely.
Thank you, Ms. DuSette. Now, we've been talking about this motion to amend for a while, and it's intermingled with the discussion of the main motion, which is unavoidable, I guess. Are we ready to vote on the amendment, the motion to amend?
I move the amendment, Mr. Moderator. Nan Schnitzler, Meadow Road.
Well, the... Okay.
Move the vote on the amendment?
You... Okay, move the question, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Would you say that?
I'd move the question, Mr. Moderator. Nan Schnitzler, Meadow Road.
Okay. She was next, anyway. All right. We need a two-thirds vote. If you want to stop debate on the amendment, the motion to amend...
We just need a majority vote, I believe.
To move the question, we need a two-thirds vote.
But doesn't 750... ...impede the other...
All right, all those in favor of ending debate on the motion to amend from 500 to 750 feet, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Okay, so we are ending debate on this motion to amend. We're now going to vote on the motion to amend. We're going to vote on the motion to change what is currently 500 feet in this bylaw to 750 feet. This needs a simple majority, the motion to amend. All those in favor of changing it to 750 feet, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Let's do that once more. All those in favor of the 750 feet, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Despite the difference in individual volume, the noes have that. So the motion to amend fails.
I dub the vote.
Which brings us back to the main motion.
I second that. Dub the vote.
Good morning.
If, on a voice vote, if seven or more people doubt the vote, we have to do a count. So we... Our counters, please come on up. Your yellow voting slips. What we're voting on now is this motion to amend. Counters, are our counters ready here?
Yep.
All right. All those in favor of changing the 500 feet to 750, please raise your yellow voting slip. All those in favor of the motion to amend to change the 500 feet to 750, please raise We done counting?
Yeah, we're done counting.
All right, everybody, you can put your hands down. All right, everybody opposed to the motion to amend? Everybody opposed to changing the 500 to 750, raise your yellow voting slips. Raise them high. Are we all done, counters?
Hold on a second.
Hold on a second.
Just the middle section. We're okay.
All right, everybody can put your hands down. It was mentioned to me that someone, while the voting was going on, was scanning the crowd with an iPhone and either taking a still or video photograph. While I'm not sure we have any specific rule against that, generally, as a common courtesy, we don't do that. So please don't do that. And if someone did, we'd appreciate it if you deleted it. Okay, we have our counted vote on the motion to amend, changing the 500 feet to 750. Fifty-four people voted in favor, 130 voted against it. The motion fails. We're back to the main motion under Article 13, which we've actually discussed pretty thoroughly already. Is there any other discussion under the main motion for Article 13, marijuana treatment centers? Yes, sir.
Pat Badus, Kettle Hole Road. A question I have is, I was looking through the article, and I was wondering if the planning board considered any provisions as far as if an RMD does locate within Bolton, how do we ensure that it remains budget neutral? I remember a couple meetings back, Chief Alfano gave a really detailed and a very, you know, logical speech as far as these businesses are very... They're cash basis, and they are targets. Now, that doesn't guarantee that we're going to have, you know, higher crime, but there is a high probability that our, you know, our public safety budget will go up. I was wondering if the planning board, is there anything that could be done to make sure that, you know, if an RMD does come here, it would be budget neutral? Thank you.
Mr. Story, man of the hour here.
We did talk about a lot of things. In fact, from the time of our meeting last spring to this meeting, we discussed this bylaw many, many, many times, and had quite a bit of involvement with different people and looked at every other bylaw that has been written, that we were aware of, and looked at various things that other towns were considering, and did intentionally try to keep this pretty simple and focused on the way in which the town would be able to review an application, giving us additional review powers, and also the locations that would be allowed. So we did not get into any finances. There are examples of permitted facilities that have made contributions to town for a variety of issues, such as public safety and, you know, things like regular inspections and paying all those fees. Typically, you know, the planning board in any for-profit or any development that comes before the town, we require the proponents of those developments to pay all the fees associated with reviewing it. So we have engineering, we have consultants. The applicants are, as a standard course, required to pay for those costs. In terms of an ongoing fee to be paid to the town for the police department, that's a little bit further out there, and, but, but certainly there have been cases that we've seen where there have been, um, funds paid to the town to help offset some of the impact, but it's not in this bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Story. Yes, sir.
E.J. Herbison, Long Hill Road, move the question.
Seconded.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded, that we end debate, and, uh, vote on the main motion before us. All those in favor of ending debate and going straight to a vote, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. We're now gonna vote on the main motion, under Article 13, for the marijuana treatment centers bylaw. Uh, this requires a two-thirds majority, because it's zoning. All those in favor of the motion under Article 13, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 14, uh, amendment to the code of the town of Bolton, terms defined and definition of medical marijuana treatment center, what's your pleasure, this is sponsored by the planning board, approved by the selectmen and advisory committee, what's your pleasure on Article 14?
Mr. Moderator, move the article.
Second.
Article's been moved and seconded, we have a planning board report.
Uh, at a duly noticed planning board hearing, held on March 26, 2014, uh, the planning board voted unanimously to support and recommend the approb-, the, the, uh, approval of the zoning amendment, um, Article 14, to add the definition for, uh, medical marijuana treatment center.
Thank you, Mr. Story. Any discussion on this one?
I could just say, this is the exact wording from the state regulation, we thought it was appropriate to use that language.
Thank you, Mr. Story. If no discussion, we'll go to a vote on this, this too needs a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion under, uh, Article 14, for definitions of medical marijuana treatment center, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 15, amendment to the code of the town of Bolton, uh, schedule of permitted uses at medical marijuana treatment centers as permitted use by special permit, sponsored by the planning board, approved by the selectmen and advisory committee, what's your pleasure on Article 15?
Move the article.
Second.
Article's been moved and seconded, we have another planning board report, Mr. Story.
At a duly noticed, uh, planning board hearing, held on March 26, 2014, the planning board voted unanimously to support and recommend the approval of the zoning amendment to add medical marijuana treatment centers as a permitted use by special permit in Article 15 of the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Story. Any discussion on this one?
I would just add that, uh, if you look at, uh, Article 15, you see that they are not allowed in residential, they are not allowed in limited recreation business, uh, which is the golf courses, and they are allowed by special permit in business, limited business or industrial zones.
Thank you, Mr. Story. If there's no further discussion, we'll vote, this too needs a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article 15, uh, regarding permitted uses for medical marijuana treatment centers, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 16 is temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment facilities, uh, planning board, what is your pleasure on this one? Somebody?
So, I would, uh, uh, make a motion that we pass over Article 16.
Saying kinda tentative about that, isn't it? Okay. Uh, so, a motion has been made by the sponsor, the planning board, to, uh, pass over Article 16 for the moratorium. Pass over, as, uh, you may recall from last night and other town meetings, means that we take no action on it, we skip over it, and, um, that's it, we don't deal with it anymore. So, uh, is there discussion about the passing over? Yes, sir.
Um, so, I have a question. So, what we just passed, Article 13, is there a chance that the Attorney General is going to shoot that down and return that to us?
Uh, I think council had responded to that. Do you have any, anything to add, council?
Well, I'm just, I'm just thinking whether I should make a motion to add an amendment, um, add, adding on to the 16th, um, Article 16, um, where it says December 31st, 2014, or, as approved by the Attorney General's office.
Well, right now, the motion before the meeting is to pass over this entirely, so that, we have to deal with that first.
Right, I, I get that. Thank you.
Sure.
Gregory Miao from Brackett and Lucas. Uh, I've been doing a lot of research on this, uh, because this is a new issue that's faced a number of, all of the towns in the, the state. In our review of other similar bylaws that have been passed, uh, we're fairly, uh, confident that this should at least, uh, pass the minimal muster of the AG's office, which would be somewhat of a, a warning, saying, well, we'll approve it, because there's nothing illegal about it, um, but, um, should someone really push on it, then, then they would have to go to the courts. Uh, the issue that I think you're trying to address is whether or not to have a backup moratorium in places. You can't have a moratorium, and, you can't have approved a moratorium and have approved the previous bylaws, uh, because if, if it does get approved by the AG's office, then that would, the moratorium would be in conflict with that, and you would have two bylaws that would be in conflict with each other. So, that wouldn't be permissible. It may be possible, if you're extremely worried about a gap period in the, in between now, the end of the current moratorium, and a, the approval by the AG's office, to extend the moratorium until that point, um, but, the issue that we're facing with the moratorium at this point, is that they're meant to be temporary, the AG's office has specifically warned all of the towns, that they have a limited amount of time to consider, uh, the implications of the state law, and to address it by enacting their own bylaws if they so choose, and we're now running into the end of the second year, or the, the end of the second year of the moratorium, uh, would be this upcoming December. Uh, anything beyond that risks being denied by the Attorney General's office, straight up, because, uh, it would otherwise be in conflict with state law.
Thanks, sir. So, the motion before the meeting is to pass over this article. You have something to say about the motion to pass it over?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Andrew Keen, South Bolton Road. Uh, instead of passing over the article, and, and based on the other comments that were made, uh, I, I'm wondering if we could word its, word the article so that it's December 31st, or the date that the Attorney General approves, whichever is earlier. Uh, so, if we can, if, I, I'm voting not to pass over the article, and, and then I will come back and make that motion.
Thank you.
So, the answer is yes, we could do that.
Thank you, Mr. Story. Yes, sir.
B.J. Herbison, Long Hill Road. The state is incredibly backed up with the first round of dispensaries. The odds of someone coming in before they even know which other facilities are gonna open, I, you don't make, that's not a prudent business decision, I don't think we have any significant risk for someone coming in. So, I think we should continue to pass over this and just go on with the other rest of the, tell me to.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Story, go ahead, and then we're gonna vote.
I agree. I, I really don't think we have any risk here.
Okay.
I don't think we need the additional.
There it is. All right, the motion before the meeting is to pass over Article 16, that is, the action we're taking is to take no action on it. It, uh, we're not gonna do anything with it. All of those, and we'll move on to the next article. All those in favor, and, uh, and that needs a simple majority, for, uh, yes. All those in favor of passing over Article 16, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Article 17, amendment to the code of the town of Bolton, special permit for kennels, sponsored by the planning board, approved by the selectmen and the advisory committee, what's your pleasure, uh, hold on a second, the planning board wants to make a motion on this one, and they also need to give us a report.
So, we're actually gonna move to, move to pass consent on 17 and 18? Should I just go through our notice first, or?
Uh, go, let's deal with the motion first, so you're making a motion to...
At a duly noticed...
Uh, let's, let's, you're making a motion to pass Articles 17 and 18?
Articles 17 and 18, passed by consent.
By consent, okay.
Second.
Okay, that motion has been made, and, uh, seconded, we did this a little earlier, so you all know what it is. Go ahead and give your reports, and then I'll come back to reading off the articles.
At a duly noticed planning board meeting, held on April 9th, 2014, the planning board voted unanimously to support and recommend approval of Articles 17 and 18 of the warrant. Article 17 is for the zoning bylaws, special permit for kennels, and Article, Article 18 is for the zoning amendment, to add kennels as a permitted use by special permit. Um, in summary, uh, with, with increased interest in all types of kennels in Bolton, a special permit process, including a public hearing, uh, should be required to give residents opportunity to have input, and for appropriate guidelines to be put in place. So, right now, we only have, um, we only have special permit abilities in business and limited business, et cetera, zones, we don't have it in residential, so if a kennel wanted to open up in a residential zone, it would be under this special permit process.
Thank you, Mr. Niall. All right, as with, uh, the, the motion for a consent agenda earlier, this one is to, uh, pass 17 and 18 without any discussion, Articles 17 and 18 without any discussion. I'll call off each one, if anyone wants to hold either one, just yell out "hold," and we'll pull that off the, uh, the list of two. Articles 17, Article 18. All right, we'll go straight to a vote. All those in favor of passing Articles 17 and 18 by consent, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It passes with at least a two-thirds majority. Article 19, acceptance of Drumlin Hill Road, Ledgewood Circle and Fieldstone Way, sponsored by the planning board, approved by the selectmen and the advisory committee, what's your pleasure on Article 19?
Move the article, Mr. Moderator. Second.
Article has been moved and seconded, uh, we have a planning board report.
Good evening, David Yessway, Wubly Road and Planning Board. And, at a duly noticed planning board meeting, held on 9 April 2014, the planning board voted unanimously in support of the town's acceptance of Drumhill Road, Ledgewood Circle and Fieldstone Way, as summarized in Article 19 of this warrant. Uh, in a quick summary, the town of Bolton enjoys a comprehensive process for the permitting of subdivisions, and that process culminates with the town's acceptance of the roads. The support from the selectmen, advisory and the planning board is predicated upon confirmation that the improvements have been constructed in accordance with the rules and regulations of the town, and acceptance is further predicated upon final inspection by our town engineer, town planner, and the director of the town's Department of Public Works, uh, I'm sorry, Department of Public Works, all of which was, uh, has, has occurred.
Thank you, Mr. Yessway. Any discussion on the, uh, motion under Article 19, for the road acceptance? If not, we'll vote, this needs a simple majority. All those in favor of accepting these roads, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 20, pedestrian mobility funds, in the amount of $4,000, sponsored by the planning board, approved by the selectmen and the advisory committee, what's your pleasure on Article 20?
Move the article, Mr. Moderator. Second.
Article's been moved and seconded, and, uh, I believe we have a planning board report on this one.
At a duly noticed planning board hearing, held on 26 March 2014, the planning board voted unanimously in support of the transfer summarized in Article 20 of this warrant. In a quick summary, the mobility committee works to identify opportunities as they arise to accept indirect mitigation funds from developers so as to finance the creation of sidewalks, predominantly in the central parts of town where demand is the greatest. Article 20 represents the culmination of a recent success in this effort, and is recommended unanimously among the planning board, board of selectmen and the advisory committees.
Thank you, Mr. Yessway. Any discussion on this motion under Article 20? If not, we'll vote, this needs a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article 20, pedestrian mobility funds, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 21, architectural design and engineering work for a new town vault, in the amount of $30,800, co-sponsored by the board of selectmen and the vault study committee, approved by the selectmen, disapproved by the advisory committee and the capital planning committee. What's your pleasure on Article 21?
Move the article, Mr. Moderator. Second.
Article's been moved and seconded, and, uh, we have a brief presentation from the vault study committee on this one.
Hi, my name is Roger Pries, I'm Pine Wood Road. The state requires a vault to store our permanent records. Digital media is a secondary way to store it only, it must be in paper or microfiche. It's the only things that's acceptable by the state and by the law. The other thing that the law states is the records must be accessible by the town clerk, which prohibits storing in the, a place like Iron Mountain, as an example. What I'd like to show you is what we have today. Our current vault is located behind the selectmen's room. It's three foot wide, eight foot long, it's eight foot high, and leaks like a sieve. You can't put anything in there. Next slide, please. This is where we, our permanent records are stor-, stored today, in the walkway, downstairs, outside the selectmen's office. Next slide. Some of our other permanent records are stored in these vaults. I am sure that that's perfectly acceptable to the state. Uh, it's temperature controlled, humidity controlled, and, uh, well, it's a law that's been in effect since 1994. We've disregarded it forever, we can do it again, we've done it twice before. There's a $200 day of penalty, if they ever wanna charge, if they ever wanna charge us. It's true, it's not there. Let's go to the next slide. Our sister city over in Sterling, built a small addition on the left-hand side of their building. It's 20 foot deep, I mean, wide, off the building, I mean, two, 10 foot by 20 foot, and it has to be accessible from the town clerk's office, so it's, the town clerk is on the second floor, so the bottom eight feet of that building is just rocks and debris, and it's just fill, is all it is, and then they put a floor in, and then up to the top. Next slide, please. Town clerk's office is right here, if you look to the end of the hallway, it's about 15 feet away, is where the vault is. I asked the town clerk how often she goes into the vault. Between two and three times per day, for some permanent record. Next slide. This is what it looks like inside their vault. It's a little different than the vault we have. The records, what they, it allows them to do is they can digitize inside the vault, because it's temperature controlled, it's lit, and they can have a senior citizen work... because it's temperature-controlled, it's lit, and they can have a senior citizen working on certain papers. That's who one of the people is that's in there every day. Next slide. 11 days ago, the State of Washington, their archives was flooded. Most of the records were not lost simply because a worker came in 45 minutes early and found the break. Otherwise, the vault would have been, would have had approximately a foot and a half of water inside the vault, and many of the papers would be destroyed. One of the problems that we have in Bolton is we have an historical building at Town Hall. It's going to be one of the factors that we have if we're going to be able to make a vault there. So that's why we have asked for $30,000, $30,800, which is what Sterling spent on their architectural design, to come up with a design for Bolton that would be approved by the state, which would meet the criteria of the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Breeze. Discussion?
Dave Lindsey, Berlin Road.
Mr. Lindsey, go ahead.
I note from the warrant that both the Advisory Committee and the Capital Planning Committee recommend that we vote against this article. Would the moderator please ask representatives from each of those two committees to give their reasoning as to why we should vote against those two articles?
If they wish. Advisory Committee?
So we, as you see, have voted to disapprove this article while we certainly see the need, and we recommend the work that's been done by the Vault Study Committee to date. The important points in the previous, or the previous speaker's presentation are important to think about. First is, this law has been in effect for many, many years, since 1994, I believe, was the date that was quoted. And while there is potential for fines, essentially, in our opinion, this law does not have any bite right now. There are many cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth that are wrestling with this very issue, and to date, the state has not made it a priority to enforce this law. What is also not being mentioned, and is somewhat surprising, is that we would spend $30,000 to have an architectural study done that would tell us that we'd need 300, we would need to construct a vault that would cost about $300,000, which is an eye-popping amount of money. And so, for all those reasons, at this time, we don't believe that it's in the town's best interest to spend $30,000 on this study.
Thank you, Mr. Dinsen. Mr. Delaney, and then we'll go over here.
The Selectmen did vote to approve this. We just celebrated our 275th anniversary in, as a town, in Bolton, and I asked the Vault Study Committee, how far do our records go back? And they said, to day one. We have records from town meeting, handwritten paper records, that go back to 1738. We have, in the summer of 1776, our town clerk transcribed by hand a copy of the Declaration of Independence that had been received by every town in Massachusetts. So we have these records, and there's an obligation, you know, it's a, it's a, the argument that we're not going to be fined so we can ignore the mandate, that sort of overlooks the public policy point, which is, the state recognizes that it's important to preserve these records. We should recognize it as a town, and to some degree, we're slow learners, because we had a fire in 2008 at the DPW garage. We lost original records on maps and plans involving town roads and cemeteries. And so, it's, at this point, we're not spending money for the vault, but it's prudent to study, to see what it would really cost in order to comply with state law and to protect our heritage.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Yes, sir.
Pete Smith, Kettle Hole Road. I'm noticing a pattern. You make a very reasonable argument, so did the speaker. They were all reasonable arguments last night. Everything is reasonable until the net effect is unreasonable. Everything is reasonable until the net effect is unreasonable. It's death by a thousand cuts. We're the third-highest tax state, a town, in the state. Everything has a legitimate purpose. There has to be across-the-board cuts, otherwise you can't have the nice-to-have things that you should have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Yes, sir.
Tim Field, Wheeler Road, also president of Bolton Historical Society. Yes, we are slow learners. Yes, we do kick things down the road. Historical records to day one are not nice things to have, and the state recognizes that. In case you forgot, an archival vault is needed to meet state regulations for the storage of official documents, as Mr. Breeze indicated. We've ignored that for a while. I'll also say, we recommend a vault committee be formed as quickly as possible. And also in the back, a vault constructed as soon as possible. What is this? This is the Building Space Use Committee Report of 1998. I was on the committee 16 years ago. I've been watching a lot of stuff, just keep getting kicked down the road. This is one of them. Some folks will remember, Betsy Cusson was pushing for this a long time ago. And as you said, day one. We have the, just got the original meeting for the first town meeting. These kind of things, if you don't view them as precious, I don't know what I can tell you.
Thank you, Mr. Field. Yes, sir.
Mike Gore, Vaughan Hill Road, Chair of the Capital Planning Committee. And just to reiterate some of the things Randy mentioned earlier, our main concern with the article is that it's $30,000 this year, but the town should be aware that the full cost is over $400,000, not $300,000. So the money should not be spent unless the town is willing to spend the entire amount. And based on recent fights over last night and the previous years, we don't feel that that's going to pass. So it's not worthwhile to spend the money this year for a study for something that's never going to get funded in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yes, ma'am, are you waiting? Oh, you're ahead, okay.
Mark Junta, Fox Run Road.
Lean into the...
Previous speaker makes a good point and mentioned pretty much what I was going to say.
Mark, can you lean into the microphone?
I'm sorry. What I would suggest is, or ask, if the Vault Committee had looked into the possibility of pre-engineered, constructed, controlled environmental vaults, such as the ones that the telecommunications industries use. They arrive on a truck, place them with a crane, connect the electrical service, and you're up in service that day. And they are, my last experience with them, they're about 25 percent of the cost that they are projecting for this. So I would suggest looking into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Junta. Yes, ma'am.
Kia Ocean Vine, 702 Main. Just sort of a basic question, is it, is it necessarily true that, that it's, the study committee is only to design a vault like the Sterling one? Or, I would assume a study committee would study options that may include some common-sense compromise positions, like, I don't know, I mean, to me, it seems like maybe the first hundred years could be put off-site at the library vault, which is unused, and maybe just the ones that the town clerk needs twice a day might be able to be constructed for a lot less than $300,000 or $400,000. I mean, isn't that what the study committee would do, would, to not just design a $400,000 vault, but to study options about how we could solve this problem in a more reasonable way?
Thank you, Ms. Ocean Vine. Yes, ma'am.
Karen Regan, Bolton Woods Way. Mr. Breeze brought up Iron Mountain. I don't understand why that's not a solution that we could pursue. They store both digital and physical records.
Several queries to the Vault Study Committee. Anybody care to say anything about that? Mr. Breeze?
The state law, yeah, Mr. Breeze, Pine Wood Road. The Iron Mountain is, the problem with it is the, one of the requirements in the state law says the records have to be accessible by the town clerk. If you put it at Iron Mountain, the records are not accessible by the town clerk. The matter is, is how long would they be accessible? We looked into it, and they were talking weeks or months for availability of a town record for the town clerk. It's just a matter of picking it up. That is not acceptable by the law.
Thank you, Mr. Breeze. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Moderator. Martha Remington, Chairman of the Historical Commission. We have not voted on this amongst ourselves. Any addition of a vault to the Town Hall structure, because it is under a preservation restriction, would have to be reviewed and commented on and acceptable to Massachusetts Historical Commission. As it is, any alteration to Town Hall now has to be reversible. That happened since the preservation restriction has been in effect, so offices, of course, upstairs, first and second floors, could be reversible to have that building as it was 35 years ago, whatever. So my question to the Vault Committee is, will this study that you're proposing will cost $30,800 be presented to the Mass Historical Commission as a feasibility thing, or will that have to happen after they have decided where and how they might want to build this space accessible to the town clerk? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Remington. Vault Study Committee, Mr. Breeze?
We have, we talked about that, and we figure, we feel that it's part, an integral part of the study would be contact both the Mass Historical Society because of the status of the building being on the National Registry, and we would also have to get buy-in by our local historical, the Historical Society and the Historical Commission before we would even attempt taking it to the Massachusetts Historical Society. So it would be a conglomeration of everyone, would have to be buy-in before we could even make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Breeze. Yes, ma'am.
Faith Sonny, Still River Road. I would like to mention that in 1994, 96, when this law was enacted, that at that time, had we actually gone through and put the money into designing and building a vault, it would be infinitely cheaper than it is going to be if we do it now. If we delay it any longer, which, you know, I recognize that, yeah, the state is not doing anything about that right now, but someday they will, and if we delay it much longer, it's going to get even more expensive. Something to think about.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Helene Demmer, Deer Path Road. With my experience with the town, I feel like we have a ton of very smart people. Is it possible to do a study without spending 30 grand on it and just get some of these really smart people that I've heard have great ideas together and maybe come up with some suggestions without investing the money? No one's saying that it can't be done, it's just that with our budget right now, maybe we can't afford it, but maybe people can conjure up some great ideas with the study? I don't know, just a thought.
Thank you, Ms. Demmer. Mr. Breeze, you want to comment?
I want one comment. In 1998, we looked at putting a vault in when we were doing a retrofit of the Town Hall to move the Town Hall Office is over. The vault at that time would have cost us $28,000. We voted it down.
Thank you, Mr. Breeze. If there's no further discussion, we will vote on the motion under Article 21 for an architectural design engineering work in the amount of $30,800. This needs a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article 21, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
All right, everybody in favor of the motion under Article 21 to spend the $30,800 for the Vault Study, please raise your yellow slip. Everybody in favor? Horse thieves. In 1801, the town voted to choose, C-H-U-S-E, choose a committee of five persons and the Selectmen to appoint a certain number of active men to hold themselves in constant readiness to pursue horse stealers and other thieves and bring them to punishment. Also, that the Selectmen are authorized to draw orders on the treasurer for all necessary expenses for the above. Not sure if they do that anymore. Selectmen. You're done? Good. All right. All those opposed to Article 21, the motion under Article 21 for the vault? Hold up your slips, your yellow slips. Turkeys. In the 19th century, a frequent sight was droves of turkeys going to market in Boston in the fall. They were usually called Vermont turkeys and were driven over the road just like cattle or sheep. No clue why they're called Vermont turkeys. We have quite a few turkeys in our backyard, as a matter of fact. Counters, are you done? Yeah.
They're still working in the middle section.
Middle section, keep your hands up. Everybody else can put your hands down. Middle section, you can put your hands down, too. On our count, we had 59 in favor of the motion and 82 opposed. The motion fails. motion fails. Article twenty-two, paint and repairs to the old fire station, the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars, sponsored by the Department of Public Works, approved by the selectmen, disapproved by the Advisory and Capital Planning Committees. What's your pleasure on Article twenty-two?
Move the article, Mr. Moderator. Seconded.
Article's been moved and seconded. Do we have discussion on the motion under Article twenty-two regarding the old fire station? Mr. Lindsey?
Uh, Dave Lindsey, Berlin Road. Once again, Mr. Moderator, I noticed that the Advisory Committee and the Capital Planning Committee have recommended that we vote down this article. Uh, I would like to hear the reasoning from each of the two committees as to why they believe that.
Uh, if they choose to respond, uh, advisory, Mr. Dinchen.
The, uh, the old fire station, for those of you who don't know, is, um, uh, not the, uh, the brick building that houses the fire equipment, as some have confused. It's actually the white building that's close to the road as you look at the fire station to the right. Uh, right now, uh, that building is essentially used for storage. Last year, the Advisory Committee approved funding of eight thousand dollars to make some repairs to the roof of that building with the understanding that a study committee would be formed to determine what the long-term use of that building, uh, would be. Uh, that study, uh, has not been done as of yet, and this is another example of where we feel that spending nearly thirty thousand dollars to repair a building that has no clear use at the moment would not be the best use of the town's funds. It is a historic building, from what I understand, and it's an asset to the town. Uh, however, we'd feel more comfortable knowing exactly what the long-term use of that building would be before we thought about funding, uh, for its repair.
Thank you, Mr. Dinchen. Other discussion? Ms. Remington?
Mr. Moderator, Martha Remington, Chairman of the Bolton Historical Commission. The First Baptist Church, Old Firehouse, storage for the hearse, this is a very historic building. They did some excellent siding repairs to it last year. I think that it warrants being repainted to keep it in its fairly good condition. It's a part of the National Register Historic District. We don't want to see a demolition permit application filed for this building in my lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Remington. Other comments? Yes, sir.
Tim Fiehl, Wheeler Road, also President of Bolton Historical Society. And some of you are going, well, we know what he's gonna say. All right. Yes, it's a historic building. Yes, it's served the town since eighteen forty-one. It has always seemed to find a use. People have found a use for it for that long. Uh, once again, I'm gonna bring up my sixteen-year-old report that a bunch of smart people got together and did for free. These things did happen. Um, it's the classic case of kicking it down the road and all of a sudden it becomes an expensive item. Remember what Mr. Breeze stated. Had we moved on the vault that we recommended back then, what it cost you twenty-eight thousand dollars? But no. Are we seeing a pattern here? I can go through Town Hall, Horton Building, Persons Park, the school, we recommended redoing Emerson to accept students. People said, why? We just built a brand-new school. What happened? Oh, we were right. All I'm gonna say is, the building is a historic building. It has had many uses through the years. I'm looking at a sixteen-year-old reports that, uh, buildings have been recently repainted, first post has been repaired, uh, roof should be adequate, overall structure's in good shape. But again, time's gone by and here we are chasing it again, and we're gonna cut our nose off the spider face again. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fiehl. Any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. I had a wait, wait. Yes, ma'am.
Meg O'Leary, Fox Run Road. I just, um, wanna say that I think, obviously, these historical sites in town are very important, but there are, um, some projects like this that, uh, should be funded by our tax dollars and some that maybe, um, need some private fundraising. And, uh, so I would consider that as an option before I would take, uh, tax dollars for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Leary. Okay, we're gonna vote on the motion under Article twenty-two, twenty-eight thousand dollars to paint and repair the old fire station. This needs a simple majority. All those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Do that once more. All those in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Afraid we're gonna have to count that one too. Counters? All right. Everybody in favor of the motion to, uh, paint the, paint and repair the fire station, hold up your yellow slips. Everybody in favor? They're still counting out there, so keep your hands up, please. Middle section, can put your hands down. Thank you. Kia? Are you done over here? If this section can put your hands down, thank you. You're done? Okay. All right. All those opposed to the motion under Article twenty-two, put your yellow slips up. You folks can put your hands down. Thank you. Middle, they're still working on you. You guys done with the middle section? Okay, middle section, you can put your hands down. Thank you. Our counted vote, we had eighty people in favor and fifty-six opposed. The motion passes by majority. Article twenty-three, Sanders Body Replacement Repair in the amount of seventy-two thousand dollars, sponsored by the Department of Public Works, approved by the selectmen, the Advisory Committee, and the Capital Planning Committee. What's your pleasure on Article twenty-three?
Move the article, Mr. Moderator. Seconded.
Article's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one? Okay, we'll vote. This needs a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion under, uh, Article twenty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Passes by majority. Almost unanimous. Article twenty-four, Culvert Replacement, Meadow Road, Long Hill Road, Randall Road in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, sponsored by the Department of Public Works, approved by the selectmen, the Advisory Committee, and the Capital Planning Committee. What's your pleasure on Article twenty-four?
Move the article, Mr. Moderator. Seconded.
Article has been moved and seconded. Discussion? Okay, we'll vote. This needs a simple majority. All those in favor of the Culvert replacement on these roads, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes unanimously. Article twenty-five, Fire Department Rescue Equipment in the amount of thirty-six thousand dollars, sponsored by the Fire Department, approved by the selectmen, the Advisory Committee, and the Capital Planning Committee. What's your pleasure on Article twenty-five?
Move the article, Mr. Moderator. Seconded.
Article has been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this motion? If not, we'll vote. This needs a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article twenty-five for the Fire Department Rescue Equipment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes unanimously. There was one no. Oh. Darn. Okay. Majority then. Article twenty-six, Replacement Fire Apparatus in the amount of five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, sponsored by the Fire Department, approved by the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, and the Capital Planning Committee. What's your pleasure on Article twenty-six?
Move the article, Mr. Moderator. Seconded.
Article has been moved and seconded, and we have a, uh, presentation on this from the Fire Department.
Good evening.
Yeah, you need to lean into that microphone.
Firefighter David Perry, live at one fifty-two Sugar Road, and I've been a member of the Bolton Fire Department for the past nine years. Um, I'm a member of a committee headed by Fire Chief John Vencer, who've been tasked to research and recommend a replacement fire apparatus suitable for the town, um, for service in the town of Bolton.
Excuse me, can you all hear him?
No.
Okay, you can pick, take the microphone out of the holder and just hold it.
Is this better?
That works, yeah.
There you go. All right. Uh, with Article twenty-six, Bolton Fire Department's recommending the purchase and equipping of a new all-wheel-drive, uh, primary attack engine, um, in retiring of a thirty-three-year-old tanker that is beyond its useful life. There are two main benefits to the town we wish to achieve with this purchase up on the board. First of all, to provide an improved emergency response capability to homes with long or steep driveways any time of the year. And second, to extend the life expectancy of our current primary response engine by moving it to a secondary response role. Uh, next slide, please. Up here is a quick overview, snapshot of what our current fleet is. We maintain five engines. Um, the new engine will become the primary response engine to all locations at all times. Currently, the town has over four hundred homes that have long or steep driveways. Uh, this can cause severe problems during inclement weather, especially during the winter months. Um, when responding to a home during that inclement weather, we have to first check a list of potentially difficult driveways and then modify our response accordingly. Um, to access these driveways, we have to use our twenty-seven-year-old brush truck, which is smaller, um, responds with limited firefighters and firefighting capability. Uh, the new engine we propose will be all-wheel-drive and capable of navigating these driveways. The new engine will also carry more firefighters and equipment to the scene as opposed to our current all-wheel-drive brush truck. Um, the purchase of this engine will also allow our seventeen-year-old Engine One to become a secondary response vehicle, which will preserve its useful life. Um, this will also allow our twenty-seven-year-old all-wheel-drive vehicle to revert to its original role of fighting brush fires. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Lindsey?
Uh, I would like to propose an amendment. I move to, in line three, uh, eliminate the words "use three hundred thousand dollars in available funds," and in line four, change the number and words to two hundred forty-five thousand dollars to, to five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Shall I grant the purpose of this?
I'm not gonna accept that yet. I'm gonna put it on a hold and see if anyone wants to say anything about the, uh, the issue of the fire truck itself.
Oh, okay.
Before we talk about the funding.
All right.
Is there, you don't need to run away, but is there any discussion about the purchase of the fire truck aside from the funding? Ms. Remington?
Mr. Moderator, Martha Remington, Main Street. Uh, I just wondered if anything has changed since the hearings that I was present at that said that this new primary response engine would not have a storage capacity for water as much as the one that we're retiring. And also, I was kinda disturbed when I heard that one of the reasons they want to retire the thirty-three-year-old tanker is no one can drive manual shift anymore.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Remington. Does someone want to respond to that? Go ahead. Microphone, yeah.
Yes. Well, uh, for the first question, this, this new truck that we're proposing, um, should carry seven hundred and fifty gallons of water, um, onboard. The tanker we are retiring, um, carries two thousand gallons of water. That is a drop, but we, as a town, have a substantial amount of water on wheels, um, almost two thousand more than any of the surrounding towns. Um, plus that combined with our mutual aid agreements and the fact that we call for tankers immediately if we ever have a significant event, um, should not impact our performance. Um, as for the older engine and it being a stick shift, yes, it can be difficult, um, for our younger guys. I can drive that vehicle and I've driven it since I've been on.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
John Devrude, Long Hill Road. Just had a question. Uh, I noticed that none of the tanker trucks have four-wheel drive. Uh, does this affect, as you said, being able to get to steep or long driveways and having that support tanker there in case, uh, we go through the seven hundred and fifty gallons put out the fire?
Uh, can I respond to that? Sure.
Um, with our tankers, they, um, don't require four-wheel drive because they're not the ones going up the driveway to attack the fire. Um, these long driveways, what we do with these trucks is we lay, uh, a large diameter hose that can pump up the water to the fire scene at the foot of the driveway, and then the tankers will come, drop their water at the foot of driveway on the main road. So hopefully during winter months, those are plowed by the town, we haven't had an issue.
Other discussion? Uh, okay, Mr. Lindsey, if you want to make your amendment, your motion?
Just in terms of the other discussion, I, uh, share, uh, the Historical Commission Chairman's concern about, uh, concern about lower water supply, and I also, while I think ultimately we need this truck, I'm not a hundred percent sure it's got to be this year. However, if it is, I would like to propose this amendment. Should I read it again, Mr. Moderator?
If you would, please.
Yeah, okay. I move to, in line three, eliminate the words "use three hundred thousand dollars in available funds," and in line four, change the number and words "two hundred forty-five thousand dollars" to "five hundred forty-five thousand dollars."
A motion to change the funding has been made and seconded. Do you want to take a minute to say something about your rationale for that, Mr. Lindsey?
Yes. This proposal would allow us to take three hundred thousand dollars out and make it available for tax relief. That would be about a hundred and fifty dollars per home. The immediate objection that many people would have is it would mean more debt. However, that debt payment would be phased over seven years and would be done without a special tax increase. For the financially-minded, the borrowing would be done at first at less than one percent, and it's unlikely to get much over two percent over the time horizon. One, a very financially-sensitive person could take his hundred and fifty dollars, and if he ran a credit card balance, pay that down a little bit, and he'd be getting fifteen to thirty percent savings while paying taxes at a one percent kind of rate on the financing. Or if he were a more affluent person and didn't run a balance on his credit card, could make a slight extra payment on his four to six percent mortgage and still come out ahead. So I think we should take advantage of this extremely low financing that municipal rates allow and turn the three hundred thousand dollars or a hundred and fifty dollars a household back to the taxpayers and let them do what they want with it.
So there's a motion before us to make all of this borrowing. Comments on that motion? There was a second, yes.
Kathy Junta, Fox Run Road. I'd like the previous speaker to actually finish the math and tell me what the total cost is going to be for that borrowing in terms of dollars because it still feels like, the phrase I've been hearing is kicking the can down the road, and it's still over zero percent interest we're paying, and therefore, there is interest. And so to me, that still ends up being a higher bottom-line number, maybe small, but I'd like a better understanding of what the total number is so that I can understand over however many years, I think you said seven, what that really is because it's still feeling to me like I'd rather use this now than spend more money later. So if you've already done the math, could you share that?
While Mr. Lindsey is calculating somebody, Mr. Delaney?
First, I want to make clear that we have this three hundred thousand dollars in free cash. The money is there. Some of the, this seven hundred and fifty we heard about yesterday, that money is available right now to pay down half this fire truck. The proposal is to borrow it all, and the pretext is, well, we'll get this one year of tax relief of a hundred and fifty dollars, so that's, that one, one-year hit is worth borrowing additional funds down the road. However, that can't happen. We voted last night, there was a proposal to increase by almost three hundred thousand the amount of free cash used to pay the budget. That was voted down. So that's, this purported tax relief isn't going to happen. And, but, the good news is, we have the three hundred thousand, and so we only have to borrow two forty-five to get this fire engine.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. Mr. Lindsey?
Yes, very, very roughly, because quick calculations, about twenty-eight thousand and five hundred dollars of interest. But if people took advantage of the hundred and fifty that came back to everyone collectively, and let's say they got, some of them put it into reducing the credit card balance, some of them paid down the mortgage, and let's say they got an average saving of six percent, that would be four times town-wide the twenty-eight thousand, so you would definitely be ahead. Second, in terms of the question, yes, we wouldn't get the tax relief this year because we've already set the tax level, but we could get it next year because we would have more free cash, and we could use more free cash in the budget, and that would provide tax relief.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey. Mr. Sikansky was next.
This proposal, well, for the past four, twenty-four to forty-eight hours, we've heard a great deal from the prior speaker about the evils of raising taxes and how they're too high, and how we have unnecessary levels of free cash. And this amendment both increases taxes and increases free cash. I don't understand the logic between yesterday and today. Please help me with that.
Mister, I believe you are next, Mr. Yesman. Go ahead.
Just echo some of the comments from the, from Advisory, but I challenge some of the comments from the, from the previous speaker. I just want to warn the audience, while this amendment, which proposes that we take on additional debt, would be tied to a low floater municipal ban, seven-year obligation is at a low obligation, is at a low floating interest rate today. If we think we're not heading for a period of, if not hyperinflation, significant inflation, we're kidding ourselves. So to take a bet on a floating interest rate, while we're currently tied to a pretty strong credit rating in this town, we should have our eyes wide open. If we have the free cash today, and we can hedge our bets from an interest-rate risk perspective, would be wise to do so. Thank you.
Mr. Wasaki, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just to elaborate a bit further on the comments of my colleague, Mr. Delaney, the fact that we voted on the budget yesterday and were basically done with that, if you go to vote the amendment to fund the entire amount of the fire truck of five hundred and forty-five thousand as opposed to what is in the article, which uses three hundred thousand dollars of free cash and two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of borrowing, that three hundred thousand dollars does not get applied to debt relief. That just goes back into free cash. So we will have, we will have in the, in the budget tomorrow, an extra three hundred thousand dollars. That three hundred thousand dollars is no longer available to be used for tax relief because Article Three has been voted on, and we're done with that. So there is no possibility to use that three hundred thousand dollars for debt relief at this point in time. We are past that at the moment.
Mr. Cody, and then we'll go back, go back to you, Mr. Lindsey.
Yes, there was considerable time spent on, on how this was put together, on the use of free cash in those short-term bans. And so, from the previous speaker's, previous, previous speaker's point of interest rates potentially going up and the variable rate on these bans, and a seven-year timeframe, we have all taken that into consideration on this committee, along with the game plan of looking to shorten that time period. But the usage of free cash in this two hundred and forty-five thousand of borrowing, as mentioned last night in the presentation, is by design and for a very specific reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. Okay, Mr. Lindsey, go ahead.
Yes, while, while it's true that we have set the rate of taxation for this year, the three hundred thousand could be used for tax relief next year. Therefore, I am not, as Mister, as the Chairman of the Advisory Committee said, I am not proposing any kind of permanent increase in the amount of free cash. In terms of the vulnerability to higher rates, I might, I have not seen forecasts for this hyperinflation kind of environment. Also, less and less of the debt gets subject to that variable rate because it gets paid down. So most of the interest payments will come in the early years, and less will be at risk in the later years because we pay down both principal and interest on the remaining principal in our debt service.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey. Mr. Wasaki, and then we'll go back over here.
Yes, Mr. Coat did elaborate the fact that this was done by design, and, you know, actually, if we had our druthers, we would have recommended paying for the fire truck entirely with free cash, of which we, we did have that ability. Now, we did opt to not do that and return two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to the taxpayers in the form of tax release for this year. But one of the reasons why we want to fund this partly with cash and partly with financing is that, in the slide you saw, some slides you saw yesterday, the one I showed in terms of the, where the additional three-point-three-four million dollars of additional revenue that we had to raise between two thousand and seven and two thousand and twelve, twenty percent of that went towards debt relief. And debt relief is, is taking a ban out to buy a fire truck. We also talked yesterday that we're actually, for the first time, we actually had a decrease in the amount of the actual debt that's outstanding. And over the course of the next four or five years, that number is projected to go down from the two-point-one million dollars it is today to about a million. So we're, we're doing the right thing to reduce the amount of debt that we have. So our decision was, one, we had some money to spend for the fire truck. Let's not load the town up with additional debt. The other thing that you, you don't know is that in discussion with the Fire Chief, they will need another piece of equipment in approximately three fiscal years, of which that particular piece of equipment is going to be around two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars, and we're going to have to manage it, hopefully, in a similar way. Also, in FY twenty-three, they're anticipated to have to replace one of those five engines that you saw on that list. That engine is anticipated to cost between six hundred and six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, we want to try to do this with a combination of, of cash and some smart borrowing, but not necessarily borrowing the entire amount. Our goal, short and long term, is to reduce the amount of debt that we have to service.
Thank you, Mr. Wasaki. Yes, sir.
EJ Herbison, Long Hill Road. With apologies to the person raising his hand, I'd like to move the question.
Okay. All right. As you all know by now, moving the question means we end debate on the amendment and move on back to the main motion. All those in favor of ending debate on this amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All right. That's all the debate for the amendment. Now, we're going to vote the amendment. The amendment needs a simple majority to pass. All those in favor of this motion to amend and change the funding entirely to borrowing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
Motion fails. Motion to amend fails. Which takes us back to the main motion. I think we're probably ready to vote on that one. All, Mr. Moderator? Mr. Lindsey?
In light of the amendment's failure, I would oppose passing the main motion. I think we could wait a year on this to try to figure out a way that would be less burdensome on taxpayers to fund this, and I also remain concerned about the, the water supply that would typically come to a fire, given the elimination of the tanker.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsey. All right. All those in favor of the new fire truck in the amount of five forty-five thousand, by the way, this needs a two-thirds majority because it involves borrowing. All those in favor of the buying a new fire truck, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
The ayes have it. It passes with a two-thirds majority. Article twenty-seven A New Ambulance in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, sponsored by the ambulance department, approved by the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, and disapproved by the Capital Planning Committee. What is your pleasure on Article twenty-seven?
Move the article, Mr. Moderator. Second.
Article has been moved and seconded. Do we have discussion about this motion for a new ambulance? If not, we'll vote. This needs a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion for a new, new ambulance in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Passes by majority. Mr. Wasaki?
I would just like to make a comment about this particular article. This doesn't cost the town a dime. This is for ambulance receipt, so this is no money out of your pocket. That's all I just want to let you know.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wasaki. Our next article is Article twenty-eight Library and Town Hall Cameras, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen and the Library Trustees, approved by the Selectmen and the Advisory Committee, disapproved by the Capital Planning Committee. And I believe the sponsor, one of the sponsors, wants to make the main motion on this article. Yes?
I would, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Oh, there you are.
Bob Zach, Chair of the, of the Bolton Public Library Trustees. We would like to move the article with the following amendment, changing-
Not, you're not making an amendment.
With the following change, changing seventeen thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars to thirteen thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you. On, on Thursday, July eleventh-
Bob, could you hold just a second? Just, I just want to comment. This has come up enough, probably you, you all, or most of you know, that an article is not necessarily a motion, and as long as the motion, as Mr. Zach just made, is within the bounds, within the four corners of the article as it appears in the warrant, the main motion itself can be somewhat different, and dropping the dollar amount is generally, generally accepted. So the, it's a new main motion before us with a dollar amount of thirteen thousand five sixty-eight. Sorry, Bob, go ahead.
Sure. So on July eleventh, two thousand and thirteen, about ten o'clock, a white tractor-trailer truck pulled off of Route one seventeen into the library parking lot, apparently trying to turn around. In the next sixty seconds or so, the truck knocked down two light poles, a tree, as well as a do-not-enter sign. The driver left the parking lot, still dragging one of those lamp poles, which fell off into Main Street and was run over by an unsuspecting driver disabling her car. Despite this chaos and the fact that the event was witnessed by a neighbor and that two Bolton Police Officers responded immediately, the identity of the driver of this truck is unknown to this day. For all we know, he may be driving down Main Street now. Outside security cameras were not part of the original library expansion project. We hadn't experienced any problems like this in the past, and the incident, but the incident that I just reported is actually the second similar incident that we've, where we've accrued property damage to the library due to that type of thing. And so it was clear to us after the second incident that perhaps we needed to take a closer look at the need. We consulted with Chief Alfano, and his recommendations were presented to the Advisory Committee and the Capital Planning Committees. A townwide review revealed that many of our public structures already have external security cameras, including the schools, but two do not. One is the library, the other is the town hall. Article twenty-eight funds outside security cameras for the library and the town hall. It's four thousand dollars less than the amount that appears in your warrant because since the warrant has gone to press, we've confirmed that we're be able to, we have enough remaining funds in the library expansion account to pay for the replacement of a set of interior cameras. So that's the reason for taking the four thousand dollars off of the article. So we've been fortunate so far that the damage to the library has been to property only, and that most of that was covered, has been covered by insurance. But it's certainly clear to us that the possibility or probability exists for more serious events in the future, and we think a small investment to protect the town's highest-profile properties makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zach. Discussion? Discussion?
Dave Lindsey, Berlin Road. If there's someone from the Capital Planning Committee, Mr. Moderator, who would be willing to give their reasons for recommending we disapprove this article, I would appreciate hearing it.
If someone wishes to, does someone wish to? Okay.
Mike Gore, Von Hill Road, Capital Planning Committee. The Capital Planning Committee disapproved of this article. We approved of the cameras for the library, but disapproved of the cameras for Town Hall. But since the, the article was presented as both together, we disapproved of it.
Thank you, Mr. Coat. Chief Alfano?
Chief Alfano, Bolton Police. The comment was made earlier this evening that we don't have any crime in Bolton. I think the gentleman that's sitting in our cell three as I speak would probably disagree with you. He was arrested about four hours ago in multiple warrants. He was not from town. We did do an extensive security review of the library and of Town Hall. I'll, I'll address the library first. If you go into the mobile station, the country cupboard, or Bolton orchards, they have very good security camera systems. If you go into the library when they have their children's hour, I can't find a parking space for my police cruiser, because there are so many families and children in there. Right now, there are no security cameras that would view the area that those children are in, or would view the entrances and exits to that building. I think the library's a little bit more important than the mobile station in case somebody steals a pack of cigarettes. Regarding Town Hall, Town Hall is used till late at night, sometimes to the hour that we're speaking of. All kinds of boards and committees meet there, there are employees there. As we all know, Town Hall is very remote. The back parking lot is poorly lit, and there are people coming and going at all times. We feel that security cameras should be installed that would view the outside, the outside of that facility. Number one, for safety, for the people that are coming and going, those cameras would be remoted back to our dispatch center, so they could be monitored during late hours, and also for protection against vandalism or breaks to that facility. We have had incidents in the past at the library regarding property damage, as Mr. Zach had said. We've also had some incidents at the library where disturbed persons, not from Bolton, have gone into the library and had to be removed or arrested by police officers. We've also had incidents at the library where we've had accusations of theft from people's pocketbooks, in one case, $800. We couldn't prove anything one way or another, because there was no camera that would have covered where that pocketbook was. So for short money, I think it's a pretty good investment for all your safety if you use the library, and I know most of you do, because like I said, I can't find a parking space. And I think it's a great investment for Town Hall. We've even had coyotes approach town employees at Town Hall parking lot, leaving late at night. So I, I think it's a pretty good investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Alfano. Yes, sir.
Joe Meyerson, 749 Main Street. I lived diagonally across the library, and I was the witness to one incident where a white van of indeterminate make was passing in the middle, early morning, was leapt over the curb and smashed into the library area, destroying trees and cables and a few other things. I did not catch the license plate, and I believe this individual was passing and was doing 50 or 60 miles an hour down Main Street. He wasn't a Bolton criminal, and he got away with it, but a camera would probably have caught that license plate.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
The Chairman of the Library Trustees talked about the schools having cameras, and now the library and the town hall, and I was wondering if the DBW had external cameras, because they're the ones who have had an arson fire and check theft. Thank you.
Man Schittsler Meadow Road.
Anyone want to comment? Mr. Lo?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. No, the DPW does not currently have external security cameras, although I wish I didn't have to say that in public.
Thank you, Mr. Lo. Any other discussion on this? Okay, let's vote. We're voting on Article 28, cameras for the library and town hall in the amount of $13,568. This needs a simple majority. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It passes unanimously. Article 29, engineering and evaluation services for Florence Sawyer School boiler replacement in the amount of $12,000, sponsored by the Neshoba Regional School District, approved by the Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, and the Capital Planning Committee. What's your pleasure on Article 29?
Move the article, Mr. Moderator. Second.
Article has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? If not, we'll vote. Oh, I got another, wait, wait, don't tell me.
Brad Reed, Randall Road, not to belabor a point, but don't boilers last longer than 16 years? Someone recommend, it seems like, a short boiler life to be replacing in a school that was new not that long ago.
Anyone want to respond to that?
I got it. Sasha Downey, Still River Road. I got a tour of them last week. They are experiencing heat exchanger failures, and have a lot of excesses of maintenance at the moment, and increased inefficiencies. So we're looking at replacing them not immediately, but that a study should be done to get it right. It's a once-in-a-generation opportunity to get the right energy source for the school, the best heating solution. Consideration in this study would be given to more efficient systems, fuel type, and the overall system configuration. So that's what they're looking to do before going forward with a much bigger expense.
So are these boilers failing at this point?
Thank you, Ms. Downey. Ms. Downey, do you want to be recognized again?
Yes, I do, please.
Okay.
Are these boilers failing at this point, and what is the expected life if we don't vote for this?
Ms. Downey, you want to respond?
I would, I-
Someone else?
I believe we've been told that a boiler typically lasts 20 years, and so they're in, they're in, starting to be in failure now.
Thank you, Mr. Dingen. Anything else? Okay, we'll vote on this. It needs a simple majority. All those in favor of the $12,000 for the engineering and evaluation services for the Florence Sawyer School boiler replacement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Passes by majority. Article 30, flooring replacement for Florence Sawyer School and Emerson Building in the amount of $5,000, sponsored by the Neshoba Regional School District, approved by the Selectmen and the Advisory Committee. What's your pleasure on Article 30?
Move the article, Mr. Moderator. Second.
Article's been moved and seconded. Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. This needs a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion for the $5,000 for the flooring at Florence Sawyer School and Emerson Building, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes unanimously. Article 31, to authorize town elections, which would happen this coming Monday, May 12, right here in this auditorium, between noon and 8 o'clock. What's your pleasure on Article 31?
The article, Mr. Moderator. Second.
Article's been moved and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor of having a town election next week, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes unanimously. At this point, I would entertain a motion-
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Dingen?
I would just like to take this opportunity, for those who don't know, this is Jim, Jim Anker's final motion, I believe, as a moderator, and I'd like to recognize his service to the town.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. As I mentioned in my opening comments, this has meant an incredible amount to me, this whole experience, and I thank all of you for, for letting me have it. So. I, I meant that in a good way. So we still need a motion to dissolve the meeting?
Motion to dissolve the meeting?
Second. All in favor of going home, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.